Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almost screwed up there. All right. Let's start with item C, approval of minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved from September 16th, 2019. Stand approved. And item D, citizen communication. I see none, so we will move on. Item E, reports from council committees. Finance and Budget Committee met on September 23rd and recommended, council approved the third quarter budget adjustments as presented, referred the 2020 budget timeline to the full body of council for further discussion, a tiered breakdown of proposed budget process changes to be presented to the full body of council for further discussion, council approved transfer of appropriations between departments within the same fund, and council direct law director to draft legislation on supplemental executive retirement plan, SERP exemption. Safety and Human Resources Committee met on September 23rd, 2019. Dan?
Yeah, we, at that time, recommended council approve the healthcare, or healthcare cost committee recommendations to leave the healthcare plan for 2020 as is, employees paying 12.5% and the city paying 87.5% to continue the wellness program, and have a $50 a month surcharge added to the health insurance premium for employees and spouses that do not complete their wellness checks by November 30th, 2019, and to offer vision and dental plans through BORMA at the employees' expense.
Thank you, Dan. And the Technology Committee was canceled due to lack of agenda items. Move on to item G. We have no new ordinances and resolutions. Item H, second reads of ordinances and resolutions. H1 is ordinance number 060-19, an ordinance adopting a revised comprehensive plan with thoroughfare plan provisions in and for the city of Napoleon, Ohio. Do we have a motion?
Just so moved.
Second.
Hey, Joel.
Thank you, Council President. Nothing new to report. This is just the second read of the approval of the city-wide master plan update.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Rox, please call the roll.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Justy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, that moves on to the third read. Item H2 is ordinance number 061-19, an ordinance amending chapter 301 definitions and enacting chapter 343, operation of low-speed vehicles, underspeed vehicles, utility vehicles, or mini trucks relative to the traffic code and declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you, Council President. This is just a second read on the item that was discussed last council meeting and in the Safety and Human Resources Committee. And just to recap, it allows for the defined slow-moving, or low-speed vehicles in 35 mile an hour speed limit, on 35 mile an hour speed limit roads. It restricts Scott Street north of La Grange, and I believe that's, that covers it, and the rest of it follows state law, unless I'm missing something.
No, that's, I mean, that's mostly correct. So there are a couple of specifics in there.
Obviously.
That don't necessarily need to be in there, as far as seat belts and being explicit about not driving on the sidewalk, but, and stuff like that. There's still a couple other extra little things in there, but for the most part, it does, it does track state law.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I'll keep the comments to myself about how stupid I think this thing is. There are already too many slow drivers on these roads already, and the safety issues revolving around this are just, I stand by what council did when we did away with it.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Travis?
No.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Justy?
No.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
We'll move on to third read. Item H3 is resolution number 063-19, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds over $25,000 for the purpose of purchasing a 2019 Terex vehicle for the city of Napoleon Electric Department, and to sole source said purchase to Terex Utilities Incorporated, and declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Joel.
Thank you, Council President. As you can see in the memo from Denny, the Terex line truck is a, this purchase would be through Sourcewell, which is formerly NJPA, which is National Joint Powers Alliance. They, they do national, with, national bids.
At purchasing agreement.
Purchasing agreements, so, Denny's done the research on this, and the quoted amount is $260,195. The budgeted amount is $300,000, and this includes a $21,000 trade-in allowance for the older vehicle. The, Denny, the other vehicle that, the other line truck that we tried to sell on gov deals didn't, didn't come close to what we thought we would.
About a third of what we thought.
About a third of what we, we thought we'd get. We, we believe this trade-in value to be, to be fair and in line with what the actual value is compared to when we tried to put another vehicle on gov deals.
And you all that big with me if not even allow us to have a trade-in.
So requesting second read.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Rox, please call the roll.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Justy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item I, third reads of ordinances and resolutions. I1 is resolution number 056-19, the resolution amending certain city finance department ordinances as they pertain to financial transaction language and declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Kelly?
Thank you. This is a housekeeping item. Nothing new to report. It's just determining the difference between the supplemental versus the transfer of appropriation versus the transfer of funds.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Rox, please call the roll.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Justy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, that has passed on third read. Okay, moving on to item J, good of the city. J1 is discussion and action, third quarter budget adjustments. Do we have any comments or anything on there, or just some, direct the law director to draft the legislation?
I want to make sure that you did talk to Tammy as far as which particular pieces of legislation you needed. I wanted to make sure that I have that correct, though.
Okay.
An ordinance for transfer of appropriations.
Yes.
An ordinance supplementing the budget.
Yes.
And a resolution transferring fund balances.
Correct.
You need those three.
Yes, please.
If you would direct me to draft all three, then we'll have it for next time.
Great. Do you want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Justy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item J2, is discussion and action on the 2020 budget timeline. Kelly?
Thank you. This was the timeline that was presented to the Finance and Budget Committee. I took off the November 25th Finance and Budget Committee meeting, but the rest of it is the same. The proposed first read would be on November 18th, the second read would be on December 2nd, and the passing the budget on December 16th.
That looks good. That should work. Anybody have any questions or comments regarding this? Do we need to approve that?
Simple motion, yeah.
Motion?
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Justy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, that's been approved. Item J3 is discussion and action, proposed change to the budget presentation. Department, division, budget meetings with council present only major request changes for their budget. Department had to determine major items with guidance from city manager and finance director. Kelly?
Thank you. This was on a list of items that I presented to the Budget and Finance Committee. Some of the items we're tabling at this point because they're four, six to nine months out and/or the 2020 budget process, so we'll bring a couple in at each meeting, so it's not all of them at once. This is, so, the budget meetings that are on November 8th and 9th. Instead of going line by line, every single item, even if it's like $40, they would present the major items to you guys. They would go over the account summary so you could see the increases and decreases, but they would present the major line items.
And then this year, we still have all the supporting documentation, so that if, we can sell, if we want to go through it line by line in our own time, we still can do that?
Correct, and every year, you would still have that supporting documentation.
Yeah. So we wouldn't lose any of the information that we had in the past, it just wouldn't be.
Presented.
Presented to us.
You wouldn't have to sit here and stare at it.
Line by line.
For hours on end, yeah.
Yeah. We can enjoy that in our own time.
Yeah. Simple motion on this one as well.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Justy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, that's been approved. Item J4 is discussion and action, proposed change to the budget presentation. For the presentation of debt information, show the current year debt payment, remaining principal and amount of debt by fund in summary chart or graph. This will provide a summary of the whole picture for debit the city holds. Hey, Kelly?
So, it would just show the accounts, and it would show all the funds that are contributing to the debt, and it'll also show, the mayor wanted to see when the debt falls off, so it's just more of a summary information for you guys. It'll show the principal and when the debt is done. So right now, there's probably 20-some pages. We would still have that backup information for you guys, but when it's presented, you can see which fund is paying for what debt and how much debt is left.
Great. Any questions or comments in this? Motion? Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Justy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, that's been approved. Item J5 is discussion and action, proposed changes to the budget process. Establish a goal of the department divisions to not utilize their unencumbered cash balances for ongoing operations. If need to utilize, then it should be utilized for one-time items. Kelly?
Thank you. So, the budget should try to be within the revenue, so the revenues, the appropriated budget should try to be within the revenue, so if they have to use the unencumbered balance, which is the cash carryover, make it more one-time item so that you're not using it for ongoing operations, because if something changes with the economy and they don't have as much coming in, that they can still maintain their operations.
Anyone have any questions, concerns for this?
How are you going to establish the goal?
During the...
What I'm getting at is, let's say we say wastewater has a certain amount, I don't know, it's a number, right? It's in a percentage, a number?
The unencumbered balance is the cash carry-in.
Okay, so let's just say it's, it's a million dollars for wastewater, and we lose, you know, major piece of infrastructure during the year, and if our goal is always have a million dollars in there, and we've got to go, we lower it because we have to have this one-time thing, are we breaking our policy and giving ourselves a ding on audit?
This wouldn't be tied to the reserve policy that we would bring up later. This is, when they go to do their budget, let's say they want a vehicle or a contract services or whatever, to try to stay within their revenue, their appropriation, their budget, so not to use the unencumbered balance for ongoing operations. So if there was an emergency, that's exactly what the cash balance is used for.
Okay.
But if you didn't have that goal, then if there was an emergency, we'd want to make sure there was enough cash.
If we do use for an emergency fund, how does it get, how does the money get back in there?
How would the money get back in there?
Yeah.
There would have to be more revenue or less budget the next year.
Okay.
Or raising fees, depending on the fund.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Rox, please call the roll. Do we have a motion? No, we did it before you asked. So moved.
Second.
Now call the roll.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Justy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, that's been approved. Moving on to item J6, discussion and action, proposed changes to budget process, items appropriated to the Capital Fund 400. Kelly?
Thank you. So the capital fund should be items that are capitalized, so the fixed asset limit is 7,500. Sometimes there's items that are less in there. We would like to refer to the Finance and Budget Committee for October 25th, where we'll talk about the, the split of the income tax for the general fund and the capital, if that's okay.
Any questions or comments?
Can you do a budget in 10 days? If you don't have that split, how do you do the budget in 10 days? Because, I mean, if we're going to do that on the 28th, right? Council's not going to approve that at all. The Finance and Budget will approve it. It won't get approved, I guess it will get approved by all council the following Monday, on the 4th, but then the 8th, we have that budget meeting. So is that enough time to, to put a budget together?
We would bring that back to the, the 8th and 9th meeting.
Right, but, you see what I'm saying? If it's, if it's not going to be 6238, and we're going to change it, so Finance and Budget looks on the 28th, full council looks at it on the 4th, is that enough time to hammer out a budget by the 8th?
Well, the current is 6238, so we would go off the premises that it was like that, so if it changed, then we would have to adjust it.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Move a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Justy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, that has been approved. Item J7, discussion and action, approval of transfer of appropriation between departments within the same fund. Kelly?
Thank you. This would be like the 100 general fund. Some of the departments have excess appropriation for the health insurance because they had some new hires or someone changed from family to single, but some of the other departments might have less, that they need more appropriation. This would be able to be transferring between those departments within the general fund. Another example of it would be Chief Mack, he has 2,100, and then he has the new K-9 department and the new SRO department, so if he needed to transfer money back and forth between his main department, those other ones, this would allow us to do that. Accounting-wise, it's totally acceptable between fund.
And I think you and I talked about if one fund did transfer some to another department, and then the original department then later on in the year needed some, then that would be available to them in another way.
Correct, at that point, we would have to supplement it. So this is just diverting, if we already have excess appropriation in the general fund and those items, that we wouldn't have to bring in more appropriation, which then the other appropriation wouldn't get used. So instead of doing a supplemental, we're just shifting the appropriation. If they needed it at some point, then you would have to do a supplemental to bring it back in.
Right, okay. Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Perfect.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Justy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, item J8, discussion and action, supplemental executive retirement plan, SERP exemption. We're going to talk about this a little bit before we direct the law director.
Sure. This budget bill was passed on July 17th of 2019, and it results in two definition changes added to the income tax laws. A question came up during the Finance and Budget Committee if it had any effect on current city employees who have retired, and there's no effect. So the new, the ordinance would add those two definitions that you see on the screen to our income tax.
Thank you for checking into that. Any questions or comments? To the motion to direct the law director to draft legislation.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Justy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item J9, discussion and action on recommendation to leave the healthcare plan for 2020 as it is, employees paying 12.5% and the city paying 87.5% to continue the wellness program and have a $50 monthly surcharge added to the health insurance premium for employees and spouses that do not complete their annual wellness check by November 30th, 2019, and to offer vision and dental plans through BORMA at the employees' expense. Joel?
Thank you, Council President. On September 12th, the Healthcare Cost Committee met to go over our update from BORMA, including our insurance renewal, and we also talked about the wellness plan and also the offering dental and vision for employees at employees' expense through BORMA, which is a new program for them, is that correct? That was just implemented and passed at the last August BORMA meeting. So with that, the Healthcare Cost Committee unanimously approved of the existing plan the way it is now, where the split is 87.5% city and 12.5% employee, and keeping with next year, the $50 monthly surcharge added for health insurance premiums for employees and spouses that do not complete their annual wellness checks. That's part of the wellness plan that was also adopted by BORMA, that gets us the, the 1% discount on the annual, annual renewal, and, and also offering the vision and dental. So the, on September 23rd, the Safety and Human Resources Committee also reviewed this and approved it, so, as of right now, and I don't know if we have it in the, I have to check if it is in the packet, our increase this year was, was 8%, it would have been 9%. We did go back, as a result of the last meeting, go back to BORMA and ask for our specific claims history for this past year, and our claims are up, that's, that's for sure, and it's higher than, than the previous two years. I don't know if you can add any or shed any light on anything additional to that.
If you look at, from our renewal in 2018 to our renewal now, our medical and prescription drug claims have gone up almost a million dollars. It was 1.6 for 2018, and for 2020, it's 2.4 million.
So again, it's, claims are up again this year, that's why it went up as, as high as it did.
If you didn't require them to do a wellness check, it wouldn't go up as much. Because that's adding to that claim.
That's, there's no way to prove that, number one, and number two, the wellness check just has people going to the doctor, so, the first thing is, I mean, there's, it's all confidential information, but the, the Healthcare Cost Committee, which is comprised of all the bargaining units, non-bargaining, and appointed authorities, approved of unanimously the, the plan the way it is, so, I don't know if there's anything else we need to add to this with the increases. I think in other, you, you looked into the other pool, the Northern Buckeye Pool, and their average increases were around, a little bit higher than ours, around almost 10% wasn't, so, I mean, that's, that's where we're at.
I saw about the list of the number of people that have not gotten the wellness check, that it was, as I stated, that the employees are not going to be in favor of it, and I think raising somebody's health insurance $600 a year is a great way to incentivize quality employees and retention as well, so.
Joel, is there a way to see if it was an increase in additional employees having claims, or was it, was the number about the same, but maybe there's more severe either illnesses or something? I think that would be interesting to see if the number of people that were filing claims compared to the total dollar amount.
Yeah, there, I think there is a way.
If you look at, if you go scroll back up.
Okay.
This sheet right there, it'll tell you, it goes through down at the bottom, like admissions for 1,000 members, that first column is our prior, so that would be 18, and then the next column is current, which would be 19, and you can see, like, we've had 59 admissions, which is about the same. Days of care has doubled. Full surgery has gone up, so you can see that people are having more procedures done. The office visits, there was 2,400, and this year, there's 2,617.
Yes, admissions is staying the same, the days of care is going up, oh, 234. You see that color at the bottom? Joel, you see that? You see that?
Yeah. Okay.
And, you know, Councilman Schaefer, you are correct about the, you know, when we went into this originally, a wellness plan would expect to see additional claims or higher claims within the first year or two, because people that aren't going to the doctor are now going to the doctor, and the idea is that, you know, illnesses or ailments or whatever the case is, be identified early so that they don't become worse later. For instance, you know, the classic example of somebody that might have cancer or, or precancer or something might actually have it addressed and diagnosed sooner rather
My opposition is, is it should be, it should not be the organization's place to tell you that you have to go to the doctor. That should be my decision or the employee's decision as a person, if I want to do that or not. It, I don't, I just don't believe it should impact six hundred dollars a year. If it was a fifty dollar one time, okay, that's minimal, but you're talking about six hundred dollars a year.
I'd like to see in the future having a reward for going instead of a surcharge for.
That's, yes.
And, and it could equal the same thing. The cost could go up, but hey, if you go, you're going to get six hundred dollars a year.
It's much easier to attract rewards rather than the state.
There, there is a reward too. There's a, still a fifty dollar gift card per employee that.
And their spouse for getting their wellness exam.
The other side of it is that, and this was at the recommendation of Chapman and Chapman, to have a, a monetary penalty side of it as well because of the, you, you, you have to drive the participation. And, you know, if, if we don't get that, hit that, hit that mark, that seventy-five percent mark, we don't get the one percent. And then it's, what's, what's the value of it, of having the wellness program if, if the savings doesn't come in on the back end? That would, that, that was the whole premise of it.
And out of the total entities, we were the highest, we had ninety-eight participation rate for the wellness exam. Out of the thirteen entities, we were the ones that had the most. And then you could, I think there was maybe five or six that got the one percent out of thirteen.
I, I would so much rather see it that the rates go up the additional one percent. And then if you get the wellness check, then you get that fifty dollars a month discount. And hopefully enough people will then think, okay, this is a reward for me, that I'm going to go do it. And then your goal is, is that by rewarding them, you save and you get enough participation that it takes it back down to one percent.
I mean, I guess what you're saying is raise, raise the premiums now and then just raise them across the board and then offer the incentive that way rather than.
Yep. If you got a, if you got a wellness check in twenty nineteen, then you get the discount in twenty. Would you get the wellness check in twenty, then in twenty-one, you get the discount?
I mean, that, that would actually, I, I think, if I'm hearing it correctly, would be better for the city. But again, I'd, you know, just like to run it through since we have the healthcare cost committee, run it through the healthcare cost committee. But how, I mean, you can, council can, can, you can do it however you want. I mean, that would be more beneficial to the city because then that premium is increased by fifty dollars per person automatically. But I guess, I mean, that would also change our, how our premiums are, are calculated too. So, I mean, there'd have to be a little bit of work on that end.
Because then if you're giving people till, what is it, November thirtieth to get it done for twenty nineteen, then in twenty twenty, if you have it done by then, then in twenty twenty, you get, you know, instead of it going up fifty bucks, it would stay the, or whatever that difference is.
Currently, we have about sixty percent that have gotten their wellness.
And if we hit sixty-five percent, we'll have a half percent. At seventy-five percent, we get a full percent discount on our, on our renewal.
So I'll, I'm sorry, I'll interrupt real fast. As far as the percentage is paid, that'll be drafted into the budget legislation. But in order to add spouses to this, I'm going to need to be directed to draft legislation because last year we only had it in resolution twelve eighteen for the employee.
I think a bigger savings on it would be is if you're an employee and your spouse is covered. If your spouse has opportunity to take their own insurance at their work, then they have to bring in a form signed. Because like if, at where I work at, if I wanted to cover my work with my spouse, I would have to bring in something saying that she was not covered. And then if I still wanted her, then it would be at a higher tiered because it's secondary insurance.
And yeah, that is, that is how most, I think anymore, most places do operate that way. We haven't, we haven't got there.
I mean, I hate filling out that paperwork every year saying that she's got insurance, my wife's got insurance there, but, you know.
You know, and then.
We do have to have.
Well.
The spouse law verification form that is done every year. They have to say if they have offered insurance or if they don't have it. And if they are offered insurance and still want to stay on ours, then they have that fifty dollar surcharge pre-two thousand thirteen and then a hundred dollars after that for a month.
Oh, I thought you meant having them be forced to be on somebody else's insurance as primary rather than.
Yes.
Okay.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to the city. So, for example, if I'm a city employee and my wife works at, I don't know, she works for Jeff. And Jeff has insurance, but it's not near as good as the city's and he pays for it. And so if she stays on mine, well, then the city is paying so that she doesn't have to take Jeff's insurance. And the only person that's happy is Jeff. Because he doesn't have to pay for it.
Yes, that is, that's right.
So it's, it's a detriment to the city.
You're right. It is. It, it is. That's been discussed at previous healthcare cost committee meetings.
Of course, they're not going to want to do it.
No, they, right, right. I mean, they did, and here's the thing, and they did agree that they, the, the entire employment group, we've been over this with them. They've talked to their members and yes, not everybody's happy about the surcharge way of doing it. But unanimously, all, out of all the employment groups, they unanimously agreed that, you know, continuation would be, they see the value in the continuation of it. Because of, you know, they want it, they had to, I mean, there's a, there's an interest in the employees to keep their healthcare costs down. Because there's, I mean, regardless of the percentage split, they're still paying for it. And, and they realize that. And that's the whole charge of the healthcare cost committee is to, is to keep costs lower. So they see the value in keeping, using this as a tool to keep costs lower. Without forcing, you know, the, like eighty-five fifteen, I think it used to be split eighty-five fifteen. And then that changed. It was widened a little, a little bit more by two and a half percent. So, you know, there's a lot of different ways to slice it, but this is ultimately what the healthcare cost committee came up with as a, as an option. And wanted to continue and commit, fully commit to the wellness program that would, would help drive that, at least that annual renewal a little bit lower.
Wait till Bernie becomes president and they have to do a single payer in the government and then they'll be happy with what they had. On that note. Feel the burn. Any other discussions or questions regarding this?
Motion to direct the law director to add spouses to the penalty provision, or the, let's call it inducements. I like that word, Ben.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Travis.
No.
Jeffum.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jupsey.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes. All right. Moving on to item J ten, discussion or action or recommendation to set trick or treat night for Thursday, October thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, from six P M. to seven thirty P M.
That was recommended by the Parks and Rec Board.
Yeah.
Sonya Ron?
I do.
Is this new?
Isn't necessarily to speak about that, but Dan.
No, I mean, I, this was, this was the time recommended by the board.
Tony, if I remember right, starting next year, you're going to bring this up in August instead of September. Is that a correct assumption?
Correct. That way.
In your board.
Right. We'll, we'll bring it up. We, we've normally bring it up at our September meeting. There's, seems to be more interest in when that date is, whether it's in the year. So when we meet in August, that will be the general item.
Do you remember in the past with, if, like next year is going to be a Friday, we ever changed the date, if it's on a Friday or a Saturday due to either football games or more traffic and things, so.
Yeah. It's, it's not always the thirty-first. It just happened in the last two or three years it's worked out.
Right.
Day or thirty-first is, would work.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a Friday, Saturday, or even Sunday. We moved it to days of the week.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Travis.
Yes.
Jeffum.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jupsey.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes. Okay, that's been approved. And moving on to item J eleven, discussion or action to approve recommendation of the N I E D F committee to grant Jack Products requests for fifty thousand dollars infrastructure reimbursement. Joel?
Thank you, Council President. This incentive was offered through the C I C in two thousand eighteen to Jack Products. It was fifty thousand dollars from the N I E D F fund. And the N I E D F fund review committee met and approved of the reimbursement to Jack Products for infrastructure work on and around the site.
I noticed they're doing a lot of landscape work recently and they're probably happy to get that two or three inches of rain after they just planted all that grass. So looking better out there. Any questions or comments?
After this, if council approves it, it would go to the C I C board.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Travis.
Yes.
Jeffum.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jupsey.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes. Okay, that has been approved. Moving on to item J twelve, discussion or action, award professional design services agreement for Ritter Park area tap project to the Manic Smith Group Incorporated.
Thank you, Council President. This, this was in our budget for the trail project that runs from Jan's Road down to Ritter Park and then into downtown. It took a long while to get this item on the agenda and get the contract negotiated because we couldn't really come to terms with the Manic Smith Group. But they were the only firm to submit qualifications. And they, they're the ones that helped us write the grant too. So overall, we had budgeted two hundred thousand dollars, but we settled on a contract price of two hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars, not to exceed. And the additional funds would come from another account in the engineering budget for five thousand, nine fifty-four. So requesting approval of award of this contract.
I didn't see, do we have a map of where it's going to be? Because I know we had talked about along River View there, which side of the street it's going to be on.
We do. It'll be on the west side of Jan's, Jan's Road. And we do have a map of it. I didn't have it in this council packet, but I can provide one in the next week's council packet if that.
About the downtown area? Does it be on the north side or the south side?
Likely on the, all the way on, on the south side.
Okay, the whole way.
Yeah. From the boat ramp area into downtown would be on the south side.
Okay. That was, I know, a couple of questions that people had regarding that.
There were some items that were cut out of the original grant application because of the, we weren't awarded the full amount. So like some of the crossings and things were not included. We took, we carved those out. And then some areas, some items around the school were, were cut out as well. But we're looking to reapply for, or not reapply, but apply for funds from Safe Routes to School program. And in conjunction, partnership with the school and apply and try to fill in some of those.
Tie it all together.
Tie it, tie it together, yeah.
The existing sidewalk that's actually in the county on Jan's Road is on the east side.
Correct, correct.
And ours is going to be on the west side.
Yep.
So basically, from the railroad tracks to the river, it's going to be on one side. And then if you're walking to school, you get a cross.
There'll be a cross.
Someplace in there to get on the other side.
There'll be a crossing, yep. Likely right before the tracks, because that's still in the city limits. And then on the other side of the tracks is the county line. Due to the ravine and, and some of the property issues that are on the east side. Because we were originally looking at the east side.
Right.
You're right, just to match up with what the county sidewalk had, but.
Down there farther, it gets away, it goes down a hurry right in there, the ravine. Yeah, you're right, yep.
Are they looking at this, sir, as a two thousand twenty project?
No, actually, two thousand twenty-two, I believe, is the, the state fiscal year, when this construction will be. So they really drag these, these ODOT projects out. So fiscal year for the state actually starts in July.
July one of twenty twenty-one.
Yeah. As I think when they'll release the funds and then, but we might not even start construction at that time. Because, you know, that time for bidding projects like this might not be good for us. So we'll try to time it up as best we can to fit the city's schedule and timing of when, when we can get, when we think we can get better pricing on bids.
Any other questions or comments? Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Travis.
Yes.
Jeffum.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jupsey.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes. Okay, that's been approved. Moving on to item J thirteen, action or discussion on accept donations of four thousand five hundred dollars from Napoleon Church of the Nazarene to the Parks and Rec Department.
Did you, did you want to talk about this?
Yeah, the city had the good fortune, the Parks Recreation Department did receive a forty-five hundred dollar donation again this year from the Church of the Nazarene. Chip Bullock was not able to come tonight, so that's why I'm presenting. He did come to our Parks and Recreation Board meeting this past week. These are the proceeds from the five K that they do every summer. And this is the third year they've done it. Their participation is getting more and more every year. So it's just a, a great gesture from the church and from Pastor Bullock. He likes the fact that we can utilize some of these funds for rec programs and, and amenities in the parks because they've got a younger church. A lot of their congregation are younger folks that are involved in programs or in parks and things like that. So we're going to use some of these funds for our flag football program. We've enhanced that this year and we've had, added some expense. So we've identified that as where some of these funds will go. And then as we have in the past, we've added benches in areas in, in the parks. And so we're thinking of doing that and possibly some tree planting. So again, we're very thankful for, for the Church of the Nazarene for thinking of Parks and Recreation. And it is their intent to continue to do that as long as they have this event, so.
That's great.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Very nice of them. Thanks, Tony. Do you have a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Travis.
Yes.
Jeffum.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jupsey.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes. Okay, J fourteen, another donation, this one from Heron Amish Furniture for the K nine unit for three thousand dollars.
Correct, yes. Thank you, Council President. This is actually materials, correct? So it's accepting of the donation of materials for the, what's being referred to as the dogma hall. And it's a. And it's a doghouse kennel for the handler. We'll still have to contribute, but I think it's valued at?
Just over $4,000.
Over $4,000, yeah.
This will have a 30-year life on it, anticipated 30-year life as well.
Yeah.
So this is, the design they came up with has an indoor piece and an actual outdoor run area that's fenced in as well and flooring and that type of thing except so you can put water products or everything on it to hold. Comes out and roll off and then they can move it to the next handler eight years down the road in 2022.
Right, thank you. I have a cardboard box. I can put shingle on it. I can build a fence around it. Talking about your dog.
That's what, that's where I like to be in, yeah, yep.
We have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. All right, and we'll go around the table here. Do you have something else?
Nope.
Well, you're going last because you're just getting all excited. Kelly?
Thank you. On Thursday afternoon, we received an email from the court. They have a technology grant that they received in April. It was $67,899. They didn't appropriate it during the second quarter because they didn't know what the timing was. Now they need the appropriation so that they can encumber a PO for an invoice that they have, so we would have to do a separate supplemental.
Okay. We need to do that. Have the legislation drafted now?
Drafted for October 21st.
Okay. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions or comments regarding this? Rox, please call the roll.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. All right, and we'll go around the table here. Do you have something else?
Nope.
Well, you're going last because you're just getting all excited. Kelly?
Thank you. On Thursday afternoon, we received an email from the court. They have a technology grant that they received in April. It was $67,899. They didn't appropriate it during the second quarter because they didn't know what the timing was. Now they need the appropriation so that they can encumber a PO for an invoice that they have, so we would have to do a separate supplemental.
Okay. We need to do that. Have the legislation drafted now?
Drafted for October 21st.
Okay. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions or comments regarding this? Rox, please call the roll.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, that's been approved. Should ask Billy if you want to, you should get a vote on some of these.
You don't want my vote?
No. Anything else, Kelly?
No, that's all, thank you.
All right, thank you for everything today and all the explanations on everything, the changes. Appreciate all the hard work and the time that you've put into this.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Hey, Laurie?
Just agree with what you said.
All right.
That's all.
I don't hear that very often, so thank you very much.
Jeffrey, you have anything?
I sure do. Well, as you guys all know, I decided last year not to rerun for council. Things have changed. My boss says it's your decision, so I'd like to take Travis's spot for the next two years. So October 31st will be my last day as a councilman, then if you guys approve me, it will be starting my first day.
Okay. Well, I know, speaking for myself, I'm glad to hear that. You bring a lot of knowledge to this council with your experience working for the city and all the input that you get at your other job that you bring back to us is appreciated.
Sure.
Thank you for that.
And I do tell you, I do not do this for money. Just to, just to tell citizens, my healthcare benefit for this next year is going to be $344 a month. I don't make near that here on city council, so it's, I'm not doing it for the money, I'm doing it for the citizens in Napoli.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So the process we would have to follow in this situation?
I have to be cold first.
I'm sorry?
I have to be cold first.
Travis, it was the 31st, you, okay, made it effective. If Jeff wanted to resign effective the 31st as well, both would need to be accepted by motion, by separate motion in that situation. We would have two vacancies. If council at that point wanted to make a point Jeff to Travis's spot, making it effective for November 1, you could make that separate motion because for Travis, Travis ran as an independent, there's no input?
Right.
From any political party. That could be something that you could accomplish tonight if you wanted to do that. As far as then Jeff's newly vacant spot as of November, we have an election here coming up, what, I think four or five days after the effective date?
Right.
Of Jeff's. In that situation, Jeff is a Democrat. I don't know, has anybody had a chance to discuss this with, I mean, because they could technically, the Democratic Party could, I guess, bring somebody to, was the one, the first meeting in November is what, the 4th, I think, something like that?
It is, they have 30 days.
30 days to meet, well...
After the vacancy.
After the vacancy.
Sure, but we would have, I guess, in that situation, they would have 30 days to meet and then the person, it's a foregone conclusion at this point, Ross Durham is the only other candidate, they could decide, I guess, bring somebody here, but council has final say, obviously, on him.
Well, before one meeting.
It'd be, yeah, it wouldn't make...
Be more than that.
It wouldn't make a lot of sense.
Finish out councilman Commodals, November, December.
Right.
Time?
But it wouldn't, the party wouldn't get notified until November 1st, till the seat's vacant.
I understand that.
Then they would have November to meet.
They could meet as soon as they wanted to as well.
Well, okay, they could, but you're talking one or two meetings.
Yeah, I mean, at most.
You're probably talking the second meeting in November to approve at the earliest.
What we're saying is we want to make sure the party doesn't feel like we're skipping them.
So I don't know if, Joe, if you had an opportunity, because Joe and I have had prior conversations, if you've had an opportunity to speak to the Democratic Party about this?
Yes, I did speak to someone at the Democratic Party and that person said she was 100% fine with it and would pass that along to others in the party and give them my number if there's any other questions or concerns. And that's been a little bit over a week now. Haven't heard anything.
So in that case, I don't know if anybody's spoken to Mr. Durham. He'd be the incoming councilman. If he were willing to start a couple of months earlier, then he could, I guess he could start on the 1st as well of November, so by motion.
We'd appoint him November the 4th then, right?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could do it on that date, that would make, that would make the most sense, I guess. What you could accomplish tonight, what, like I said, was to accept both resignations effective 10/31.
I think we accepted Councilman Schaefer's already based on last meeting.
Did we do a motion? I don't think we did a motion.
We did not do a motion.
We didn't do a motion, we just read it.
We just read it.
I don't care if you did a motion or not, I'm still going.
Just to keep everything official, though, it might be a good idea to have a motion to accept both resignations effective 10/31. And if this is indeed the will of council to have Jeff appointed to Councilman Schaefer's position effective 10/1, so that would be three separate motions.
Okay.
To make that happen and then the rest of it, as far as Mr. Commodals, or Councilperson Commodal's position could happen at a later date.
Okay. We probably wouldn't need, Mr. Chairman, would we need some official from the Democratic Party for that spot?
I don't believe so.
It might be a decent idea to have, if they would put together a quick email or something in writing just to say, we're not going to contest?
Submit a name, yeah.
For the one spot, for the, for the two weeks that that person might be able to show up, assuming council would even approve that person for that, you know, for that one.
And that's probably it. The council probably would not approve.
No, of course not.
And we don't want to embarrass the party.
It wouldn't make, it wouldn't make any sense for them to do that. It wouldn't make any, that whole process would take somebody who was being less than reasonable, I think.
Doesn't the charter say that if they don't submit a name within 30 days?
Yeah.
Then it goes, but if they submitted saying, hey, we're not going to submit a name, then you go, otherwise you have to wait the 30 days.
I don't think you would have necessar, I mean, I don't think you would have to wait the 30 days. I'd have to reread it just to make sure.
Because I think they have, they have 30 days and if they don't say, hey, we're not going to fill it or we're not going to submit anybody, you've still got to wait that 30 days for them to...
Yeah, I'd have to reread it. I think the best way forward, practically speaking, is just to get something in an email from the Democratic Party saying that they're okay with bringing Mr. Durham in a couple of weeks or if that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, so just within 30 days thereafter, may recommend, if no person is so recommended.
So may.
Yeah.
May recommend, may not.
Shout out, may, Joe.
Well, if you don't get something from them and you just flip it over, you're going to take them all.
No, right, right.
Mostly what we're doing here is just being, trying to be as practical as possible.
Right, right.
Let's talk to them upfront and see what they say and maybe just give an email and, you know, in writing to say that they're, they're okay with what's been discussed and they've got the representative, Mr. Commodal, staying for two years longer than they had expected, so.
Well, if he took my seat, he wouldn't be coming in as a Democrat.
That's party politics and that's beyond me.
I mean, whether he's registered as a Democrat or not, that may be different, but it's going into an independent seat.
Yeah.
I'm registered as a Republican, but I ran as an independent.
Sure. Your registration wouldn't change, I don't imagine, because you took Councilperson Schaefer's spot. Practically speaking, if we could make those three motions to accomplish that tonight at least, moving forward from there, that'd be the best way to go.
Okay.
So, and I did have a chance to do some research on this and everything, you know, it was well board, so.
Great. Thank you for all that, Billy, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, could I have a motion to accept the resignation from Councilman Schaefer?
So moved.
So moved.
Can he do his own motion?
You guys are testing me here. Let's have, let's have Councilperson Sinclair be the person who moved to accept that. Hold on a second.
All right. Rox, please call the roll.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, could I have a motion?
Congratulations, you're still in.
Right.
Kinda.
Almost.
We think.
Have a motion to appoint Jeff Commodal to replace Travis Schaefer. That's the one we're doing, that process.
Effective, effective.
Effective November 1st.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Don't know veto, right? You okay with this?
I'm good.
Okay.
All right. You have anything else for us?
Our year, our year's almost up. I hate doing this, but that hole's still there where water can't get to it on Monroe Street and East Clinton. Is it ever going to get taken care of?
They're, yep. They're charged with getting that taken care of. Let me, let me check and see when that's going to be done on the...
All right.
When that's going to be on the schedule.
I also noticed when they, they did the great paving job, that they went over our water valves. I see they are marked, but about a week or so after they paved, I'm looking for the valves and nothing there. I see somebody's gone back and put blue paint.
Where was this at?
Haley Street. Have you been down there and seen? If they have to do an emergency shut-off late at night, they're going to be getting air hammers out and going digging up where the valves are.
And that's exactly why we want you back in council.
There we go.
Yeah. That and he looks at the bills.
Mm-hmm, right. And he all do. He just points things out.
It's not.
I do see, Joe, that there is blue paint there, so somebody knows, but you think it'd be priority now just to be?
Before the end of the year, yep.
Yeah, just be on the safe side.
Because they paved it already this year.
Yeah, it's paved. And we're going to be doing fall hydrants.
Next week?
Well, there you go. With some of the lines up in the area, they, they do have a tendency to do crazy things.
Yeah.
Okay. And one more.
All right.
The last time they did hydrant flushing, which was May, June, they found a catch basin right across from my house that was sinking. There is a cone still there. I know the guys are busy, but...
No, we actually just talked about this today and, and I asked, do we have any other catch basins we need to do this year because we have a line item for that in the budget?
Sure.
So there's a cone on the catch basin on...
Right across the road from me, on...
Sheffield?
Sheffield and Strong. I'm getting tired of looking at the cone.
The cone's been there a while.
Since the last time they did hydrants, flushing. No, thank you.
Dean?
Nothing. Just had a question about kind of a safety thing with kids crossing the street to wait for a school bus. I guess I didn't notice this in the past, but on my street, on Woodlawn, which gets to be pretty busy on, every school day morning, there's, the bus picks up kids, I think it's at the corner of Sheffield and Woodlawn. And there's kids that live on, on the south side of the street and then they're crossing to get to the north side to be picked up. And there's, you know, there's no crosswalk, there's nothing there, and there's quite a bit of traffic on that street. And the ones I see, it's three, three sisters, and they're always not close together, they're staggered, so I used to see them darting across the street every day. And last week, there was one, there was a little kitten following them, they were playing with the cat, and I'm thinking, you know, that just seems dangerous. I don't know
Hey, Chief?
How we do that any other places?
Do you, do you coordinate with the schools on where they have their bus stops at?
We talk generally.
Okay.
But it's up to them, and then they do confer with us, that's something relatively new in the last year, I think, that Jeff started conferring with us.
Okay.
So I do have a back-to-back piece, let them know.
At least on that one, can we take a look?
Yeah.
Sheffield and Woodlawn?
Yep. If the bus stops, and stops traffic both ways, the girls can cross there in front of the bus, right?
They're crossing before the bus gets in.
I know.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
If they just wait on the other side of the street until the bus stops.
And then they get the, okay?
Yeah, because they have stop signs there, they have some traffic control versus running randomly across.
Because they're getting there probably five or 10 minutes earlier, and they're playing with the other kids on the other side, so...
Kids across the street, yeah, yeah.
Just everybody, I see that, and I'm thinking, that's just not very safe at all.
But where does that bus pick them up?
On Sheffield? Or on Woodlawn?
North Sheffield and Woodlawn, yeah.
Yep, right at the corner.
Yep.
And maybe there wasn't an issue before, maybe there weren't kids on the south side of the street till this year or something, but now there is. That's all I have. Oh, I think it was somebody, oh, he's not here, he left. Chief O'Brien celebrating his 10 years of being with the city, that's great, so he left, so I'll congratulate him later. And congratulate us for being able to have him for 10 years.
Yeah, that's true.
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Was that Tentico for their efficiency smart award that they earned with AMP? And the, the boss out there praised the fire department for their help with their, with their leak they had for their, for the fire suppression system, and also for Lieutenant Legg for taking them through some training, so, yeah, if Chief O'Brien was here, you'd get a happy boy for that.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, his bad, he's gone, can't see his birthday, and we'll get that a boy, but... And I talked to Chief Mack about it, you're talking with a cop, which I thought was, I appreciate you guys doing that, getting out there and talking with people and, you know. Does the SRO go to more than just Napoleon area schools? Does he go to the parochials too?
No, sir.
No? Okay.
We're trying to fill those spots with our regular road patrol.
Okay. My son said they played sports at recess or after school with a cop, I wasn't sure if it was the SRO hanging out or somebody else. I think today.
That was Rocky.
Oh, is it?
He was stopped on duty.
Okay.
Did that.
Okay. Enjoyed it, so it's...
Good, thank you.
That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Chief?
Nothing.
Jeffrey?
I got a couple complaints about the railroad crossing at Oakwood. Is it possible to do the same thing you did at, did the city do that at Glenwood and Bales Road and Washington?
We did. That was our experience.
Since the railroad doesn't seem to want to pay for it...
They don't. They won't. I mean, they've come out in the past, it's always a fight every, every year or every time this comes up.
Okay.
Dealing with them, and they occasionally will come out and patch it themselves. But I, I recommend we hold for now, try to get them to do something with it, and then when we address Oakwood, all of Oakwood, it'll be fixed in that project, if that's alright with you, okay with everybody, unless you want to...
If you're going to do a small patch or something to just help a little bit?
We can patch it.
Not a, not a complete rebuild or anything like that, just a patch?
And we've done patches in the past on railroad crossings too ourselves, but we try to reach out to them to get these fixed on their own, but it's even like a weed spring. Every year, it's, you know, you just have to put it on your calendar to keep, keep at them.
How much did that cost to do the one on Glenwood, would you say?
I know.
And you get a ballpark, just...
It was, it was a, it was a few grand.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I would think that our residents would appreciate, you know, spending a few grand to not have to drive over the bumpy crossing.
Yeah, if they could do the same thing there, that was a nice job they did on that one, I think.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Billy?
I don't have anything.
Okay, alright. That's it's all then.
Okay.
Anybody object to that? Joel, what you got?
I gotta, want to refer one thing to the Electric Committee, and that is an update on the condition of our substations. We can do that, to that in the Board of Public Affairs. The Henry County Chamber has their annual meeting on October 30th, and Joel Miller was trying to get a head count of who's going to be there from the city, so if you could let me know, and we can get him a, get him a tally.
Mm-hmm.
And then the last thing is, I knew you were going to do this.